Okay. It is October 21st, 10 o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Real call. Smile.
Here.
Pam.
Here.
I'm Murphy here. Number four approval minutes of the last meeting, special meeting, October 9th, 2019.
Have you had a chance to look at it?
The additions or corrections.
I haven't. I'll move past that.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Here are my monthly reports. Come on, hang on there. I need to get Jeffrey down here anyway, so.
Okay.
Call him. Cause I know I have them. I thought they were on my board, but I don't see them on my board.
Okay.
We're ready. And would you grab the monthly reports folder? The green folder. It's over there where it's always sitting. In my office, you know, the east side. Okay, thanks. So, we wanna... Well, I guess we better not. We've gotta do this first. We could skip the monthly reports and go to the transfer.
Okay. We'll just, we'll just do that. Okay. Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the transfer of appropriations from Highway, District, number three, Maintenance and Operations, to Capitol Outlay at an amount of $58,000. I'll move that one in.
All second.
All favor.
Aye.
The next several take care down here anyway, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry about that. There was the monthly reports.
Okay, we'll skip back to number five. Approved, disapproved monthly report for the following, the sheriff's office. It's just one we didn't have last meeting.
I'll move through approval. All second.
Favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Did they ever do anything after use hand glass and painting and stuff?
Thank you.
You doing it for paying that?
Not yet.
Saw it. This one's from where?
Uh, yeah.
Have they done anything up there? All they have.
I don't know. She has another page. I think she's got her page. Let me just stamp it on there.
Okay.
That'll work.
Give these people whatever. Warts. Last time did it in Haverly. Yeah.
It's okay.
Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding opening of, opening the seal bids for 25 by 50 building bids, number 192006 for District Three.
You have three bids.
Here's the steel. It is $49,600.
You're gonna have to sell the sitter or the gator or something. Yeah, I think so.
Oh wow, they had a rack, didn't they?
What crammed me up is that poor old gal just rolls out there. Now just run right by her like went to them horses. They were, yeah. Leave her way out there. I seen a repeat of it all over town.
Yeah, I heard about that on the news this morning.
Who's that one?
Bernie, even Harson Sons. And you do. $120,654.
She's a young. She's a second.
$120,624.
$654, yeah.
$650?
Yep. One, two, zero, six, five, four.
Okay.
Bernie.
And some Harson Sons.
Harson Sons. Bernie.
I think that part, that part is actually written.
He's really clever about sharp objects.
I know. Sounds not sharp.
The point is that's a F.
That's probably true. And who's this one?
This one is Integrity. Integrity is $40,400.
All right.
Yeah, the first part, I think. The last page is letting me look at the first page. First part of his is a copy. Yeah, it's okay. Just the papers.
The other, you don't say that.
That's what Julie told me. That's what he said.
What did it say?
Plumbing.
It says.
Plumbing wasn't.
The electrical and the HVAC will be bid separately. And then it says plumbing wrote on the back there.
Uh.
Can I, uh, can we move on and let me look at these? Come back to it? Yeah, I don't care. Or do you wanna?
Take it and look at it.
Doesn't actually. Well, I can look at it. Okay. You know, we just keep moving on. Okay. I mean, there's other stuff there. While I'm looking at this, I'll try to make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to number eight, discussion of possible action regarding opening the seal bids. Electric for 25 by 50 building bid, 192007 for District Three.
You say electric.
Do I?
Electric.
Yes, yeah.
Not too busy on that one.
Regardless, it's gonna go to fifty grand.
Yeah, but we bid it the right way.
Uh, we did it the right way. We were separate. We, okay.
So everybody, yeah. Only one that should have had like bonds with it during the was the one that went over.
Burns.
Burns with it.
Yeah.
And I don't know if it's on this. I'll have to look. Could it happen?
That one we did ask for.
So this.
Well. What about these?
If they have to. I don't know. Would you accept those? Do you have an idea about that already?
No. Well.
You might want to table plans.
That's what I talked to Julie about this morning. You know, I mean, if we do the loader deal, that's, that's all I. Yeah, cause then you might as well table and look at it. But, yeah, I mean. Yeah, I'll have to. Either no action or whatever, but we'll, you'll definitely have to get a transfer next week prior to accepting bids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first one is JV Electric. And it is $32,560.
Who is it?
JV Electric, Vincent Schreiner. $32,156.
Is it more than one on the electric?
Yes. Northwest Electric. And Northwest Electric is $10,840.
Please look your eyes.
See if I have anything left on you on both of them.
Table them too.
You wanna go back and table that first one?
Yeah.
So we're gonna go back and table number seven.
Yeah.
And number eight on the electric.
Number eight's nice.
Okay.
Can't done nine yet.
Okay. Number nine, discussion of possible action regarding opening the seal bids for HVAC for 2550 building bid, number 192008 for District Three.
You second, right?
Yeah.
Did you second those?
Everybody in favor of tableing those three?
Aye.
I guess.
And she can go in and look at that, right?
Yeah, I, yeah, you can open so he can look at it. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, he needs to open and look at it so he can see what he, that way.
You got two for HVAC too.
Who's this?
Brandon's Comfort Solutions.
See out of Rainwood?
Yes, sir. $9,846. You have Fairpoint. Keydian Air for $12,675.
What's that, $12,675?
$675, yes.
All right, there. Better than that.
See, I think on this he's chart, I don't know. On this one, it looks like he's not gonna charge you for it though. His.
Cause he's got a zero in it?
I'm saying he has a zero out there. That's what I was looking at. It looks like he's still gonna zero it out because here's his estimate and then on the front of that sheet, sheet is the same as this one.
All right. I'll make a motion. We tabled them as well. We're, yeah. We got all three of those tabled. We'll move on to ten. Discussion of possible action regarding the 744K John Deere Loader, District Three, is purchased from Yalla House through Source Bull with financing, Form 120B.
Number one for the 43.
That's all right there.
Okay, I'll step in.
Second one there. This is just for the street walkie. Gentlemen, just go there. Manage yourself, bud. Lubber. Watch your mouth, bud. Manage your there. Where you're at initially.
Yep.
Here, here. Just initial. What is today?
21st.
One more time right there.
Who do you find answer one of?
Huh?
Who do you see finding?
He's well, isn't it? Well, that's the.
Two, one open.
Yeah.
One open.
Okay. Core man, yeah. Getting like the name out of the chat there.
Sure, I'm trying to do that, maybe off the time it's on. Like, what do you guys think?
I didn't make that motion.
Yeah.
Just make that motion. He making second goes.
Thank you. I was looking at you. That's all right.
My whole weekend's kinda running out, right?
Does it?
Uh, yep. Right there. Sign, title, date.
I was a little bit down.
Amortization schedule, how long, Jason?
Sixty months.
Sixty months.
Yep, and the rate was three, six, seven.
Ninety-nine.
Yeah. That's just your notice. We can send it to sign it. We're signing it, cool, right? That's the actual assignment. That's between us. And then we'll just put that in there. She had a copy. And then you can sign. Something right there here.
I signed all yours.
It's been dotted.
Yeah, well, that's just warranty. It'll be fine. And that's just so that they know what to buy, what warranty for us and what else. That's, yeah, you're doing well there.
That's the spinky piece of thing I've never bought in my life.
Sure.
It is.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I want to get a DA signature on the 120B too.
Okay.
I've got a little more in my life.
Do you?
Be awesome.
Okay. John Dowd, his new loader. We'll move on to discussion of possible action regarding the name change for District Three requisitioning officer, Julie Bowen changed her name to Julie Parker. And a name change for District Two requisitioning officer, Gina Shaw changed her name to Gina Smith.
Okay.
One got married, one got both married.
Get it back.
All second.
I'll say aye.
Work for me.
Yes, yeah, the original one there. Thank you.
Number twelve, discussion of possible action regarding a revised SAC Fox, SAC and Fox National Juvenile Detention Center contract for the year 2019, 20. And that's one we tabled last week because of some legal deal in there and the DA looked over, signed off, and says we're good to go with that. So I'll make a motion to approve.
All second.
All right.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion carries it.
I think I got everything I need.
Again, number thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding the yearly contract with Secure Tech Systems in the sheriff's office and an amount of $1,690.50.
Make that motion?
Yeah.
Maintenance, agreement?
All second.
Favor.
Aye.
Motion.
What exactly is it?
It is a.
Camera or something? Digital.
Wave wall rechargeable battery, 12 volt, 4.5 AH, whatever that AH stands for. Pushback replacement battery, service and test complete system, two years warranty extension. I'd say mainly the warranty extension and stuff on just technical stuff.
Okay.
Number fourteen, discussion of possible action regarding the RE grant resolution for Woods County, Woods County Conservation District for wildfire prevention equipment. Yeah, instead of wildfire. Just a typo there, so. Hey, and this is all it is, is they're applying for a RE grant for this new skid steer to help cut cedars.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
In a second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding county employee safety meeting on December 5th.
And I just thought we needed maybe to discuss that, you know, um, he's. Brock said that was gonna be the best date for December, so I told him to go ahead and book it out the women's building and, um.
Thursday?
Yeah, on a Thursday and thought, well, we could discuss what time we wanted to close. I think last year we closed the courthouse at.
Noon?
Noon, I think is what we did.
Yeah, or 11:30 or noon.
Maybe it was 11:30 so they could get out there. And, so.
We can do that.
I'm moved.
Okay. 11:30 it is on December 5th.
Whether it's.
Final safety.
All right.
Second.
All right.
All very. Everybody good with that?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, number sixteen, discussion of possible action for providing rock and hauling for the event center. Okay, I met the exise board asked me to come last Wednesday and they thought that they wanted to make a contribution to county if it's good with us for rock and hauling, hire local, local truckers to provide the rock for the parking lot out at the event center. This deal could carry over into a couple, two to three fiscal years. They're talking about 18 months construction. It's still not set in stone. It's still not set in stone on the event center, they're gonna build the big complex, but the, the practice arena and the horse stalls are, are kind of a hit and miss deal on the financing, they don't know about that yet. But that's, uh...
Have they got a proposed challenge, uh...
Yeah, they got, it's thirty-six thousand tons. Be about seventeen hundred truckloads. The, I did a little figure, the, the comment was made there last week that, that that money that's contributed is, uh, uh, turns over seven times. So, that's kinda interesting to know that, that every dollar that we can, the county contributes to that, and about two and three fourths times of that dollar turning over, we generate back our half percent sales tax. They said that every dollar turns over seven times per dollar spent, so. And being where co-beneficiares, us and the city, it is a contribution of, that it's gonna be ours at the end of the day, or fifty percent of it ours. So, I, I think it's a, it's a huge boost to our economic, uh, going on around here for local truckers. The beauty of this deal is, is, is the hauling can, they can take on other jobs, and this deal is not gonna be a have to, right at a certain date to be completed, because they're talking about covering a big portion of that forty acres with it.
What are they gonna call local?
Yeah, what, uh, it doesn't, it, you know, actually regarding providing the rock, we're buying it through...
Buying it and paying for the haul.
Exize Board is wanting...
The, the, our, the county. Yes.
And...
And pay for the rock, the haul. The, they, the five eights from down at the, uh, A part.
And we're hauling it.
No, we're gonna pay for the haul. None of us have time, I don't think, to haul it.
We don't.
Yeah, but it says that's what we're gonna do.
No, it says pay providing rock and hauling rock.
Providing rock and hauling rock.
Right. That's the pay for the hauling and the rock.
And that's what they're thinking, thirty-six thousand tons of that five eight.
The thing about it is, is if it ever, if, if it ever, we could go back and recoup it.
I just wanna know a little bit more about it. That doesn't, that, that leaves the door open. Doesn't state thirty-six thousand tons, it doesn't state five eights, it just says we're providing the rock, hauling. They haven't started any construction?
No.
That could change. I hate to say, yeah, we'll do it, and then something else changes, and then we gotta back up. Is there a reason why we need to get this done before the construction?
Uh, they, they said...
Deadline or anything like that?
They said that, here is my understanding, that a commitment from the county allows the first twenty million to be the base of the project.
To be started.
To go. Uh, that's, uh, they have a, it, it's, John, I don't understand it, it's with the financing. Uh, the, the, it's private money that's gonna build it. And they, they had looked at where some of this five eights has been down, and this five eights out there, and that, we should've been more specific about that, but they think that's the kind of rock. It's the cheaper than blacktop or, or concrete, and they have to be, it has to be for livestock to travel on, horses is what they're all about, and that that, that meets the criteria for that, so it's pretty much set in stone that that's what it's gonna be, that's what, because it's available and there, and, and works for that. It's gonna be a million dollars or a little more. A million, a minimum. I think that the rock and the, and it is set in stone, and I think it's a, on how much is it's gonna be, is the verbal.
Right.
Because they aren't sure about the, the warm-up arena and the horse stalls. And as near as I can tell, they're talking about an eighteen-month construction deal. And there's not a definite start date yet, so we're past the first quarter of our fiscal year. So this deal could go into three fiscal years here.
But we've got to start this before they do anything. We've got, we've got to make this motion.
That's my understan, we don't make the purchase, we just gotta make a commitment that, that we will, uh...
Our commitment, our commitment sets up their financing.
Yeah, for the base.
For the base of the financing.
They just, they, they looked at that five eights where it was put down, and they thought that that would mean the project could be a lot cheaper than concrete or blacktop is what they're...
Who's they?
The Timberlake, the general contractor.
Mm-hmm. That's who's doing the dirt work?
Well, the general contractor is, is just oversees the whole project.
Booked the, the construction part.
Everything, the construction, the building, they're gonna oversee the whole project, this Timberlake. They don't drive any actual nails or...
Right.
Tightening bolts, they're just...
They just run and manage the, the construction.
Yeah.
They set up all the specs and...
Yeah. They work with, uh, the Preford. Preford is, was in on the, the, uh, the design, I guess, for, for that. Now, I don't really see...
I don't wanna hold them up in their progress, 'cause it's been five years or whatever it's been already, but I'd like to look, know a little bit more about it than that. That doesn't, uh, that... I don't, I just, I don't, I don't feel right about that, there's not enough explained in there. It's providing rock and hauling rock, it doesn't say what kind, how much, where it's from, how much they want. You know, they said thirty-six thousand ton, but is that thirty-six thousand tons of five eights, or?
Well, that's, that's, uh, yeah, I guess we were...
I mean, they need the base, and then they need to put that on there, but... I'll, I'll go with whatever you guys wanna do. I just, that's my concern.
Well, I guess, we were a little lax on the agenda item, but that's what it, it's for, but that's for, and that, that hauling is for to pay local, local truckers at, at like our hourly rate. And, and that's, I don't know, there's a verbal, I think they figured out it's six, six inches of rock.
Right, and then that's gonna change.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
That's what I mean, so...
Uh, it doesn't seem to me like to, 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 to commit to yet until we get some more information.
Well, I mean, I, all I'm gonna say is it's gonna change during the project, just, and I don't know how they're gonna set anything in stone. You know, I mean, I think that's the, uh, maximum, I should say. I think they've got it figured at that, I don't know, is they need six inches of cover over the whole thing, I can see where six inches, but I mean, that's a pretty huge area out there that...
Can we not set this up where we...
Well, I guess where I'm coming from with this, the order...
Where we put in there that we will provide as long as it is the five eights local trucking.
Yeah.
I mean...
I think that could be in the motion.
And then that way it takes care of it, they're gonna have to use, if we're gonna be part of it, they gotta use our rock from down there.
Right.
In local trucking.
I think that'd be good to have in the motion to do that. And I think it's gonna have to be looked at every year in July.
Well, I agree.
With that, to know where, where we're at when they, they do it.
I wanna see it before July, but that's just my opinion.
So what do you wanna, I mean...
I wanna table it till I get, uh, more information, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna hold them back if it needs a financial commitment.
But what exact information are you needing?
Well, like I said, there, it's, it leaves it open. Discuss possible action regarding providing rock, what rock?
We can dictate that in our motion.
And hauling rock? Are we hauling it, or are we gonna pay somebody to haul it?
We can dictate that in our motion, if we make a motion that says they have to use five eights, that flex base five eights, and they have to use local haulers, then... Or are, or we don't, we don't go along. I mean, we, we can dictate the whole thing as far as that goes.
But you don't know what they're building, and you, how do you dictate what you, you don't know if that's all they need is five eights, whether they put five eights and it doesn't work, and they gotta back up.
Well, I'd say if the five eights don't work, then they're on their own.
I mean...
I mean, we, we agree to that, or, or in our provision, if we make the provision of what they gotta use, because that's what they've already said that they're gonna use.
Right.
We make that provision that they have to use it.
We're paying for it, so they're gonna use it.
Right.
Right.
Basically.
Right. Exactly, that's what, that's what it all boils down to, and...
But are you gonna put the provision in there that how much they can use? Thirty-two thousand?
Well, I don't know that...
Going off of their figures, but, you know, I'll pay you a hundred thousand if you're gonna pay for it.
Well, that's true, but, but how do you, I mean, how, I mean, I don't know how you come up with that exact figure.
What, what exact figure, how much rock?
How much rocks they're gonna use. Does that, I mean, that's gonna change.
Well, I mean, it shouldn't. Six inches, uh, eight times width.
Is, is that their six inches was figured in that thirty-six thousand? I guess when they get to thirty-six thousand, like...
And it could be, it could be forty-some thousand. I, I may be speaking out of turn, that was quite a while ago, that amount was there. I just, uh, I know what...
If we table it, is it gonna...
I don't know what it does to their financial deal, I don't know if it's weak with her, but, uh, here's what... Forty-two thousand five hundred. I know it was seventeen hundred truckloads, and a twenty-five ton was forty-two thousand five hundred. Now, I could've figured that at twenty-three ton. Those trucks load differently down there to weigh eighty-five five.
Right.
So, uh... But the, the whole thing is, is we're pretty cer, I'm pretty certain that it's not gonna get hauled in there at this fiscal year. Uh, and in July could be looked at again to the need. I mean, I, who knows if they're gonna get started on it in thirty days, and the dirt work has to happen before any, before any rock can be hauled...
They're not gonna have it ready by July, I guarantee you that.
Been five years, they ain't got nothing done yet.
Seeing it.
Think it's gonna get something done?
Twenty-three ton per load makes it thirty-nine thousand ton. So...
That's my only concern.
I mean, we can table it for week.
Yeah, I, that's...
Somebody here is gonna tell me something a little bit more than...
I'll just see about Sawyer coming next month. How's that?
Yeah, he's got construction plans and all that.
He's our rep, so, you know, we'll just do that.
So you mean the motion to table?
I will, if that's what we need to do.
I'll second.
Okay.
On favor, aye. Any new business?
I don't have any, we're about finished with the city project. Maybe there tomorrow probably be done, hopefully. Our biggest contribution will be done.
The Glenn Street project?
Yeah, but I don't think it's gonna be open by...
By what?
By homecoming. If you hit her cabinet, might make it.
Mine is homecoming.
Saturday, isn't it?
Yeah, this weekend.
This weekend, okay.
Better beat the birds than the rob.
Number eighteen, approve this blue blank person.
I'm moving to approve those, I'll second.
Favor, aye. Number nineteen, motion to adjourn.
I like that one.
I'll second.